requires certification by the school board that a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved if the Stafford County School Board hereby certifies to the Bethune East Members of Knowledge, only public business matters were lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law that were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies and only such public business matters as was identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting was heard, discussed, or considered.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. McOssker, second by Dr. Chase. Do you want to call the board?
Dr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Decatur? Ms. Egan is absent. Ms. Hazard? Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. McOssker?
Agree.
Ms. Young?
Agree.
Madam Chair, your motion passes.
Well, how do we deal with Ms. Egan though since she was in the meeting?
Is she coming?
She is coming back.
She'll be.
Can we just leave that vote open because I just want to have it on the record that we had all of us voting. When she gets back, we can just ask her. All right, so now we'll call this meeting to order. Do we want to have a roll call?
Present.
Ms. Decatur?
Here.
Ms. Egan, Ms. Hazard?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Mr. McOssker?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Egan, did you want to vote on the motion coming out of closed session that only the items on the agenda were heard, discussed, or considered? Okay, thank you.
And then we have a coming out of closed session. I have a motion.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. Now, Mr. McOssker has his motion.
I move that the school board approve the superintendent's recommendation with regard to employee A.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, now we're back to the regular. Motion by Ms. Young.
Second.
Second by Dr. Chase.
And we want to recognize Nelson Cale, retired slash acting principal of Wide Water Elementary School for presentation of awards. Mr. Cale. Oh, and Ms. Nash.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Kizner. I am here along with Wide Water Principal Kristen McKenney Nash to give very special recognition to the Wide Water PTO and PTO President Wayne Stores for giving outstanding service to the Wide Water Elementary School community. Three years ago, school administration asked the PTO and President Wayne Stores to work with school staff to design and put into place a bus unloading and loading procedure for the first days of school. This is to ensure that bus time is calm, well organized, and every child board the proper bus during the very busy start of every school year. On the first day of school, and I had the privilege as acting principal to witness this, this year Wayne and the rest of the PTO and school staff go to every classroom and give a child a color-coded rubber bracelet that directly corresponds to the bus that the student rides each day. The PTO also, for the first days of busing to start each year, helped to staff the bus ramp AM and PM to load children onto the proper bus. And I'd like to add that President Wayne Stores did this with a casted foot this year too. This is one small example of the Wide Water PTO's amazing outreach. There are countless other examples of the marvelous work the Wide Water PTO does for the Wide Water School family. Wide Water Elementary School PTO, including Wayne Stores' PTO President, please come forward and be recognized.
That concludes our awards. We now have the staff reports. We have the elementary class size enrollment report. Dr. Kizner? Okay, we'd like to invite Mrs. Cale to the podium. It's that time of year.
Cale's show today. The Cale Show.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Kizner. I'm very excited to stand before you tonight to present Stafford County Public Schools 2018-2019 Elementary Class Size Report. The school board approved Staffing County Public Schools staffing standards, continue to provide a compass on how we provide human capital resources in our schools. The board addressed elementary class size first with the adoption of the staffing standards. This is our third year of implementation of the elementary staffing standards. To assist with the analysis of our class size reports, the Office of Demographic Planning provided the projection analysis report as of September 30th, 2018. Please note preschool numbers are added separately for the September 30th, 2018 enrollment. Those preschool enrollment numbers are not included in the total enrollment or projection columns. For the 2018-2019 school year, our total projection was only 22 students under the September 30th enrollment. Pretty impressive. Our elementary enrollment increased by 100 students from last year. Our total enrollment division-wide has increased by 361 students as compared to last year. Once again, it does not include preschool. As you can see, our division enrollment is steadily increasing, which of course requires an increase in human capital. Please note, when we show the class size report, it is based on the number of students assigned to K through five classrooms and does not include self-contained special needs classroom information. Again, the elementary class size report is based on student enrollment, of course, as of September 30th, 2018. This presentation includes the following information: average class sizes at each school, the average size by grade level at each school, the frequency of classes from 14 to 27, the comparison between class ranges for the current school year and the past three years for elementary, and the number of classrooms exceeding the adopted staffing standards. The average class size at the elementary level is 22.4. This is a slight decrease from last year, which was 22.5. Our average class size per school ranges from 19.7 at Hartwood Elementary School to 24 at Park Ridge Elementary School. In 2018-2019, there are six additional elementary classrooms when compared to 2017-2018. There's an additional classroom pending at Moncur Elementary School, which would increase the number of additional elementary classrooms to seven. We may look at the use of paraprofessionals for the two first grade classes, since there are five seats available in the remaining three classes. The school board's strategic allocation of resources and commitment to the staffing standards over the past several years have made a significant impact. And sorry, I'm just using pages from the comparison in case people need it, and obviously they're attached. The division average class size by grade levels is kindergarten 21.3, first 21.7, second 22.1, third 22, fourth 23.6, and fifth 23.5. You'll notice slight improvement from 2017-2018 in some grade levels and others are remaining essentially the same. Additional information regarding class size at each grade level by school is included in Attachment C. The majority of our elementary classes have between 20 and 25 students, with the majority having a class size of 22 to 24 students. For the second year in a row, we do not have any classrooms with 28 or more students. And once again, this accomplishment is due to you all, the school board, ensuring resources are allocated appropriately to meet our staffing needs. I would like to provide a great spanned view of our class size frequency over the past three years. When comparing the number of kindergarten through second grade classes, we decreased the number of classes with 25 to 27 students by one class from last year and eight classes from two years ago. Again, we have no K through two classes with 28 or more students. When comparing the number of third through fifth grade classes, please note the number of classes with 25 to 27 students decreased by 28 classes when compared to last year. The number of classes with 20 to 24 students increased by 35 classes when compared to last year. This is the result, of course, of implementation of our staffing standards over time. We are proud to report that out of 548 classrooms, only four classrooms have not met our goals as defined by Stafford County Public Schools Staffing Standards for Elementary. Once again, as of September 30th. Based on elementary staffing standards, kindergarten classes should not exceed 24 students without having a full-time dedicated paraprofessional. And grades one through three should not exceed 26 students per class, and grades four through five should not exceed 27. At the time of this report, we only had one classroom exceeding the staffing standards of kindergarten, and that was at Rock Hill Elementary School. After correcting some student coding errors, the class size is now 23. For grades one through three, there are two first grade classes exceeding the standards by one student each in Moncur Elementary School. One new first grade teacher position at Moncur has been offered. We may, and this was back as this was going to be on last week's, two weeks ago, agenda, but we may look at the use of paraprofessionals for the two first grade classes, since there are five seats available in the remaining three classes. Paraprofessional support is being provided for the one-third grade class at Park Ridge Elementary School exceeding the cap by one student. For grades four and five, we don't, we have no classrooms exceeding the staffing standards. We're very proud of the improvements we've made over the past three years through the support of our school board. Our overall class sizes have decreased from 23.8 to 22.4 students from 2015-16 to the present. In addition, in 2015-16, we had 48 classrooms with 28 or more students enrolled. For the past few two years, we've had zero classrooms with 28 or more students. It is obvious your strategic allocation of resources has had a dramatic positive impact on class size. We appreciate your dedication and commitment, and as always, we will continue to monitor elementary class sizes throughout the 2018-2019 school year. And we look forward to presenting our 2018-2019 secondary class size report to the DEP Board at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Why don't we go down the line? Is there any?
Yeah.
Does anyone want to start with you?
May I ask a question?
Yes, we'll start with you, and then we'll give everybody a opportunity.
Sure. Okay. I think you mentioned comparison, when you talked about the comparison staffing standard, the coding error that you applied, did you apply it back to everything or just to that particular error? particular error?
That coding error was site-specific. That, okay, so we corrected that, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Decatur?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Ms. Hazard?
Sure. We're just doing one and going around.
Okay, that sounds good.
Ms. Kale, you stated that the current capacity that we're using with the 24, the 26, and the 27, was that what the standard that was used when we staffed over this past summer?
Yes.
Okay, so we ignored the staffing standards that were in place this past summer, which were 24, 24, and 25?
Wait. Our staffing standards this past summer, as far as the School Board's staffing standards, were 24 in kindergarten, 26 as the maximum in grades one through three, and in grades four and five, 27. Class size reduction schools, one school was 23, and the other class size reduction schools were 24. So we staffed according to all of those.
Okay. However, our Virginia teaching model and most of our staffing standards were at 24 and 25. I understand that you say the cap-
That is the cap.
-was 26 and 27, but that was not the number that was envisioned. That was as far as we could go, because it said FT for 24 with a cap of 26. Is that correct?
That is a goal, which obviously you can see by our class average, it's pretty close to that, or lower.
Right, so I really like that we stay with the 24 and the 25, and the 22 in kindergarten.
But we add positions at the cap.
Ms. Egan? No? Dr. Chase?
So I'm very happy to see these numbers, and I think they look great. As you know, I have some concerns, and next week we'll have the secondary. I think it's lovely that no child in elementary has to be in a class of more than 28, but we have children in some of our middle schools where every single one of their classes is 30 or more, and so we have a little bit of work to do in middle school. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. McOscar?
Yes, thank you. Good report, as usual. Some of the comments from last night, and we'll talk about it, the actual meeting, but if we could get a chart that shows just actual numbers, like three years out, like 2016, 2017, 2018, I mean, total, just so we can kind of track those numbers, I would appreciate that, and I think the Board would, too. It's kind of, it's kind of hard sometimes trying to follow, how many did we really increase? I know one supervisor last night looked at our, looked at our projections analysis, and it said minus 22, and they, she said, "Well, why are we even buying Fredericksburg Christian School when you've lost 22 students?" So I just like to make sure that we're very clear on our chart, as an upfront chart, Dr. Kizner, and then, and then we go in as a deep dive on the other stuff after that. I'm real-
...that we've got 100 students.
Yeah, but we do have 100 students, extra Justin Elementary, and then, I think, 361 across the board.
Yes, and last night, and also today, I have, thanks to Matt Townsend, I appreciate his work for doing the projection analysis, but we had attached to last year's class size report-
Right.
-the projection analysis, which I'm holding in my hand, sorry, and we have a similar one to this year, so those, you can see, it's a-
Yeah.
-increase of 100 for elementary.
No, that's, no, that's good work. And so, so that was one point. The other point was, you know, this Board had a concerted effort with staffing standards three years ago to hit that max. When you hit that max, then, once you hit that max, then you got to start buying teachers with new money, right? It's doesn't, it's not one-time money that we left over. It's new money from the state or from, or from the local government. And so, you know, 22, the average of 22-ish is okay, but we can do better for elementary, and I assure this Board will. I do, I do share, as I shared last year, the concern about middle school this year. We tried to do middle school class size reduction last year, and we kind of ran out of money, because it will come to pay raise or buy teachers, and, you know, those are the two, you know, those have always been mine, and many people, many Board members, two primary concerns was employee pay, and I don't want to say teacher pay, I want to say employee pay, and the second would be class size reduction. I know that the middle schools that my kids attend and have attended in the past, the core classes of seventh extended math, of science, of English, they were always hovering between 30 and 38 students, you know, 30, 35, 34. And that's a lot of students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade to be in a classroom on a core, on a core subject and core curriculum, right? So I hope that we, this year, we work with Dr. Kizner and the staff as a Board, and we really take a good look at our, our middle school numbers, right, and then, and see if we can't make some headway on middle school this year. Thanks.
Sounds like a preview for the next meeting, we get the middle on the high school report. Dr. Kizner, I want to thank you, Mrs. Kale, and all the staff that worked on this. I can't imagine the number of hours, and not to mention HR, thank you, Ms. Aberg, and those in your office who worked on this as well, finding the teachers, getting them on board, you know, getting them allocated, reallocating, I, it's, I just can't imagine what you, what you go through there. And I'd just like to note that in a perfect world, all our schools would be where Hartwood Elementary is, at 19.7 in the classroom, but it's not a perfect world, so we're doing, you know, the best we can, and these numbers look so much better than they have years in the past, before those staffing standards were set by this Board. And I know this Board has reviewed those staffing standards, because the intent when those standards were, were set, and I remember very well, the conference room over at Mary Washington Hospital, the plan was to relook at it every year, but when the next year came, there weren't the resources to, to, to reduce it further. So I'm very happy that we are where we are, agree with my colleagues about the middle school, and we'll look forward to a report next month.
Thank you, and I would like to echo thanks, as you indicated, Mrs. Healy, because it takes a whole team, and every year I say this, but it's not as quick as a snap of a finger or a push of a button, and it does take a team, as in Dr. Aberg, our technology department, Mary Lee, et cetera, and I can keep going, obviously, Ms. Neely, et cetera, so it takes a team, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Healy, I do have a final, I have a final comment, just in general. I think one of the things that this report shows, though, that we have increased by 20 classrooms are elementary over two years. One of the things that I stated at the listening tour was my concern that the way that we got there was by taking classrooms, teaching spaces, computer labs, focus areas, in order to, to make that. So kind of, Mr. McOscar, to your point of, of, of the comment being, when you look at the schools that house pre-K students, those are the schools, some of them whose numbers are higher over two or three years, which to me completely shows the brilliance, in some sense, of going after Fredericksburg Christian, because now those, some of the schools, I have them marked, but I'm not going to name them, their class size over two or three years went up, but partly because we were using additional spaces to do that. So from my perspective, the purchase of the former Fredericksburg Christian will even, you know, if we do this right, will help us there, but I believe that we do miss the point if we aren't saying, "We are using every available space to create classrooms." And I still believe we do lose something by having some of those pull-out spaces and things all being converted to classrooms, and I think on a holistic level, that is something we still need to examine, because I think this shows exactly why we purchased it, and I think next year's numbers will help us determine, you know, whether we were right, so.
That's a good point, Ms. Hazard, and perhaps it's something that we should discuss when we get to the redistricting process, about leaving room in our schools for these pull-outs, and depending on, you know, what the needs of the schools are, it's not just counting the classrooms, and how many classrooms, and how many can we multiply that by the staffing standards, so we'll keep that in, on, in mind. That brings us to citizen comments.
Individuals wishing to comment at this time may do so by responding to the general invitation by the chairman. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speaker shall announce the purpose topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with approval of the Board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, which threatens the imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the Board provides the opportunity for citizens to comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against the division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize procedures outlined in Stafford County Policy 1113, Public Complaints.
Thank you, Mr. McOscar. We have six people who signed up for this evening. I'm going to read the first three, and when the third one comes up, I'll read the next three. The first speaker is Thomas Taylor, the second speaker is Pastor Tim Wilcox, and the third speaker is Brandy Work. Mr. Taylor?
So my name is Thomas Taylor. I live at 24 Lappas Drive, Fredericksburg, Virginia. We were in Ms. Hazard's district. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and present this. I'm going to try to be as brief as I can. In recent weeks, an issue's come to my attention that I feel needs to be presented to this Board. I've addressed the issue with the principal of the school, however, I haven't received any feedback as to a final disposition or any actions taken, and believe that the conditions still exist. Let me begin by saying that I attended the last School Board meeting and definitely appreciate hearing the comments of the superintendent, as well as members of the community, in reference to the student that was unfortunately isolated during the active shooter drill. There were many points made during speaker comments that I wholeheartedly agree with. In my household, we attempt not to judge anyone. We have not walked in their shoes. If any judgment's going to be made, it's going to be made based on the character of the individual as they show through personal interaction, not race, religion, disabilities, differing opinions, sexual preference orientation, or the opinion of another. Actions such as kindness, cooperation, respectfulness, and humility have no color, creed, or preference. No categorical designation should be allowed to define any individual human being. That said, it was brought to my attention that an educator took it upon themselves to display an LGBT flag similar to the ones present in the last Board meeting in my daughter's classroom, prompting discussion among students, including a comment, "He's now my favorite teacher because he supports us." Though I do not believe there's an intent here towards malice, I have to wonder what exactly the message is. What does this say to students in the classroom who, for religious or other reasons, may have a different, may have different ideals with respect to matters of sexuality and relationships? What is the impact on the students who aren't necessarily aware of the meaning of such symbol in a classroom? Who else is represented in such a manner? Are there going to be symbols for children with freckles, disabilities, low income, high income, children who don't easily make friends? Where does this end? I would argue that there already is a symbol in our classrooms that represents everyone. It's the flag of the United States of America. I see no value and definitely no equality in this educator's actions, except to bring attention to a single facet of society above all others. I am 100% agreement with equality for all. Tolerance, as was mentioned in the last meeting, is not acceptable. Likewise, I believe that all educators need training and policies that facilitate them being able mentors and counselors to the extent that they have such exposure to our children in our absence, and I feel strongly that this should be focused, again, on all facets of modern society, the challenges, and the advantages that it brings to all. I'm not in any way opposed to opportunities such as clubs or approved curriculum in the vein of sociology or human studies, where LGBTQ issues are discussed openly and respectfully in equal representation to other relationship ideals as matters of fact, not right or wrong. I do not have, I don't have an issue with the educator in particular, what I have an issue with is a symbol in a classroom that represents one facet of society above. Thank you.
Taylor, Pastor Tim Wilcox?
Well, thank you. I am Tim Wilcox, 1837 Warrenton Road. My children went to Hartwood Elementary, Gale Middle, and Mountain View High School. I've been a pastor in the area for 26 years, and so my family's from here. I would like to say I stayed at the full meeting two weeks ago and heard, you know, you going through the budgets and the millions of dollars that you have a huge responsibility on, and I just wanted to say thank you for all that you do. I know you put many hours in, and you work hard, the meetings, the preparation, dealing with parliamentary procedures, all those are very difficult. Serving the community and dealing with difficulties and concerns and complaints by parents and individuals coming while you're trying to create the atmosphere of a good education in our society, and I understand it's a very difficult rope to walk, and I appreciate all that you do. I'd like to thank Mrs. Hall for allowing me this time, and, and the Board, and Mrs. Hazard for being my representative. I try to stay in contact with her and keep her on my prayer list as well, as well as other government leaders, and Dr. Kizner, I had you to my prayer list just the other day as well. I'd like to speak as a pastor for people in our community, and also I'm on a board called Virginia Assembly of Independent Bachelors, I gave you a letter from the last meeting. A few weeks ago, I saw a social media statement and dealing with the safety drill, and to me, I felt like the meeting two weeks ago was going to move away from that issue and go into bathroom policies. And that was a concern to me that I shared with some of our members and other pastors in the Stafford area. I did hear comments talking about having a right to pee where I would like to, and other comments from the other meeting, and I just wanted to come and say that I do have concerns. I heard someone share a great Bible verse that I love, that "We're all fearfully and wonderfully made." And I'd like to add to that, in Genesis, it says that "We're created in the image of God, male and female created he then." And I do believe that there is maleness and femaleness, there are strengths in those, and I just want to have that to be encouraged and to leave ahead. A couple of things that I'd just like to share, a statement at the last meeting was up to one out of 33 children are transgender. I don't know if that's accurate, but I would like to say, we heard a lot of comments from that meeting, and I would like to say, let's stand up also for the other 32 students, that we must have equality all the way around, and these are important issues, whether we're dealing with bathroom issues, locker room issues, or sports issues to come in the future. And so, Dr. Kizner, Mrs. Hazard, and School Board, please let me encourage you to stand with the families of our community and have common sense policies that deal with maleness and femaleness. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Pastor Wilcox. Brandy Work, followed by Julie Perham, Art Watkins, and Paul Wodowsky.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, School Board members, and Dr. Kizner. My name is Brandy Quirk, and I reside in the George Washington District, 132 Stableside Lane. I'm here to talk about rebuilding Ferry Farm Elementary School. We, the community, want to understand how rebuild went to a renovation in two short months from the time we met at the input forum on March 8th, 2018. The documents I have found showing costs don't add up. We've gone from a 25.5 figure with an open date of 2020 to a 38.3 million figure with an open date of 2024, and if we waited another decade, it would cost 46.38 million. We want more thorough explanation with full transparency and complete accountability for these figures. How is it that we are not provided with more details of where these numbers are coming from and how they were and are created? Are there actual metrics that qualify and quantify these figures? We also want to better understand, if a renovation was what the School Board wants, then how is it that, as of last night, I'm hearing, the proposed FY 2027 open date for Phase II Reno went from costing 4.5 to 6.9 million? Let's not forget that during the course of fiscal 2020 to 2025, Ferry Farms' draft, CIP, shows infrastructure needs totaling $4.6 million. This includes, to name a few, replacing roof, I say rebuild, replace walk-in freezer and refrigerator, I say rebuild, repair mechanical systems, I say rebuild, replace generator, I say rebuild. On October 9th of 2018, the Assistant Superintendent for Operations told me, "School age is out at 50 years." Ferry Farm Elementary is 61 years old. It's the oldest elementary school in Stafford County and the only school in the George Washington District. On July 24th, 2017, Glenn and Parker presented the schematic design booklet to the Board. I called them to better understand, why did Ferry- I called them to better understand, "Why did Ferry Farm have a slide in that collection?" It was explained to me that their scope was to, and I quote, "Develop a prototype design of a school that would be used on several locations." And I quote, "The school board asked GNP to particularly look at Moncure and Ferry Farm Elementary." Per GNP, and I quote, "We tested the design man, and the design fits though nicely." And as the presentation also says, as part of that schematic design services, GNP studied the Ferry Farm site, chose a site, designed fits, is a good fit on the Ferry Farm site, as part of a phased occupied site condition. How much did that work cost, and why was it done if only eight months later, plans for Ferry Farm was becoming a renovation, and the word rebuild was out of the question? Why are we not using the survey and design as our foundation for rebuilding Ferry Farm? What gives? What's next? Where's the full transparency and complete accountability? Thank you for your time.
Julie Perham, followed by Art Watkins.
Good evening. My name is Julie Param, and I live at 415 Decatur Road in the Griffiths-Widewater District. I am a teacher at the Hampton Oaks Elementary School, where we believe in strong hearts, strong minds, and strong efforts, but I'm not speaking on their behalf. I am also a proud member of the Stafford Education Association, but I'm not speaking on their behalf either. I am speaking on behalf of the Stafford County Public Schools staff, who are like me, the folks that are at or near the top of the salary scale, who seem to be minimized and forgotten by our past superintendents and school board members. We keep on keeping on while watching everything that this county does revolve around attracting and keeping new employees. We are the mentors you turn to when new staff need training. We're the steadfast soldiers who can be depended on to go the extra mile, and we are the ones who have stuck it out through the lean times because of our loyalty to our students, our colleagues, and our community. In return, we are undervalued, underpaid, and overworked. The median market scam has rewarded new and recent hires while those of us near or at the top see our salaries in real dollars decline. We're denied transfers in favor of out-of-district hiring. We're burdened by ever-increasing demands that must be completed outside of contract time. Morale among our senior folks is, in a word, it stinks. And no one seems to care because, to court a former superintendent, we can hire two fifth-year teachers for the price of one. I strongly support SEA's 5% for all proposal, and I believe that that is a huge step in the right direction in improving compensation in an equitable way. All of our employees, experienced and rookies, deserve it. As my elected board, I look to you to find a way to achieve this worthy goal. I also, however, urge you to examine the policies that undermine morale, especially of your experienced staff. I've been accused in the past of not being specific, so here are two suggestions. The transfer policy, as it's currently being implemented, is broken. When a county teacher of the year is passed over for transfer in favor of a first-year, right-out-of-college hire, there's something wrong. When in-county teachers are told that they won't even be considered for transfer because the county prefers to hire from outside the division, it's demoralizing. We are losing amazing staff because we don't have a policy that gives real preference to existing employees. In addition, as it stands currently, our contract hours mean nothing. I'm told my day ends at four, but buses are regularly arriving at 4:30 or even later in some locations. Then there are the other mandated meetings, events, and paperwork. All of them take place outside of contract time. There really should be some limit on just how much time we are required to donate to the system without compensation. In short, yes, as an old-timer, I want you to fully embrace the 5%, but I also believe it's time for you to direct some of your attention and resources to the most senior of your staff. Treat me and my colleagues as though our experience is a benefit.
Calculations anyway, a month ago, for their planning document. And the school capacity calculations we did discuss has nothing absolutely... I mean, bring the camera in closer. It has absolutely nothing to do with class size report. School capacity calculations is all to do about when do I add millions and millions of dollars to the next school? It has nothing to do with class size. It has nothing to do with disrespecting teachers. So I said that before. I guess it didn't sink. It has absolutely nothing to do with class size. Class size is the class size report that we just provided you. So please, don't fall into this spin about increasing class sizes based on the capacity report for when do we need a new school and when do we need money? That's all that document shows. So we also talked about our elementary school class sizes. That was the same exact documents that were on the board tonight, but we didn't discuss them because the board had not approved them or seen them as a board, so we passed them out.
At their request.
At the request of the supervisors. It was moved that we would not pass them out, but then they all started saying, "Give me, give me..." You know, it's a foietable document anyway, and it's already... And if they actually went on the website, they could have pulled them down. So we did give it to them, but we did not discuss, for the most part, class, 10-year class size. 10-year affordability, we talked about that. We talked about our top two projects. We talked about the high school number six and elementary school 18 as a school board relatively. I think that's where we're at with our top two projects. And they talked about the courthouse. And they actually mentioned, you know, the courthouse initially came in, the brand-new courthouse, which was competing for the school school large capital projects. They actually started out at $71 million a couple of months ago. And actually, a couple of months ago, last year in November. It started out at $71 million, and now it's down to, I think, somewhere in the range of 48, 49 million. They've really kept, you know, cut it down. And so that, you know, so they're doing their due diligence on that side to make sure that, you know, they're looking at their costs as well. We had some discussion about the joint school selection process. And but the big do-out was a... I'm sorry, joint school site selection process. But the big talk was about how next meeting, I think it's December 3, we're going to talk about, what's the charge of the committee? So just like we start out with a document on the finance and budget, I wrote it up. The next person makes it better, right? Dr. Chase, right? And we make little tweaks to it. So I'm going to start the charge of this committee. I'll write it up. I'll send it to Dr. Kizner and Mr. Foley, and so he can distribute it to the staff. We'll start there, and then hopefully our discussion on December 3 will have input for, what does the joint schools working committee do? And what are we, what's our left and right boundaries? And what do we talk about, and what do we leave to the finance and budget committee to talk about? Because there was concern about, you know, how many joint committees does the school board and the board of supervisors have, seeing that we have a couple of five, six meetings a week, and so do they, right? And the last thing that the county gave me was, I don't know if it's a, they called a rough draft. I can't remember. It's a draft. It's called Stafford County 2040. It's the... And there's a page. Strategic Plan. It's the county strategic plan. And there is a page in here for education. And so what we'll do is, they were nice enough to hand that out. They gave us a link for it, and I think it's on the StaffordCountyVA.gov. You can go on and look at it, www.staffordcountyva.gov backslash 2040. I think that, did I miss anything, Dr. Chase? Not good?
Well, I...
Go ahead.
Yes. Well, I did suggest to Mr. Smith, this was maybe an informal comment, that they have a logo with education with an apple, and I suggested they use our new logo that the board approved and that, you know, our communications and strategic planning is putting everywhere with the reaching for the stars.
I suggested they stop using stock pictures.
And Mr. Smith is a deputy county.
Yes, he was there for the, Mr. Foley. And did you want to address the design versus program capacity? I mean, just not, I mean, we're just going to have to agree to disagree, and we can respect the county's way of doing their calculations. But I think we were fairly unanimous in responding for the record. The board of supervisors has advised us that they've decided that for future planning for needed schools, they're going to use the design capacity for each school, which is how many students are designed to be in every room in the school. And I think we respectfully noted that we use program capacity because at times, many of our schools cannot accommodate the number of students that they may be, have been designed for because of the type of our programs and the different needs. And I think Mrs. Hazard mentioned some tonight about, you know, needs for pullout. We talked about special education. While our newer schools are designed to have a certain number of special education classrooms, that may not be the number that are actually in use in the school. So I think that's just something that we're going to have to, you know, not agree on. But, you know, we will respect what they're doing, but I think we need to keep up with our numbers, and we can show both ways. It's good to show the design, and it's good to show the program as well. But for planning for future schools, I would think that we would want to have the most accurate information, which is what our schools can actually accommodate in terms of the students and the programs. Mrs. Young, did you have anything to add on that?
Sure, sure, sure. On that, I just wanted to add that we did suggest at the end that they, even if they're planning on using design capacity, to keep the program capacity in mind, that we will be giving them those numbers anyway, because it might vary and it might not. But I do want it to mention that I did step in for Board Member McCosker, his alternate for the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission. And it's not on the list, but if we're attending it, I think it should be added. But it was a good meeting. It was well-attended, and discussions surrounded around the lacrosse program for boys and girls. They have a good number of students attending those tournaments, and it's well-represented. They also had a discussion about maintenance of the parks. But we had an ad hoc member who was a student from, I think, Colonial Forge. I thought that was interesting to mention, that she wanted to know how bills were created, or, you know, she was interested in environment and keeping our parks cleaned. And her name, I believe, if I got it correctly, is Ashley Endwara. So shout out to Ashley. She didn't mind hanging out with old people. So if more students are interested in any of these committees, feel free to apply and join us. We don't mind having you all. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Young. That brings us to superintendent's comments.
I will be very brief. I sent you some information last week. We're making some good improvement on hiring bus drivers, and it's ongoing. And we hire, then we lose, but we're gaining more than we're losing. And Transportation's also working on adjusting some routes, hoping to get children home earlier. Okay? I went to a really good meeting today that I'm going to hand you. It's on teacher retention. There were some really interesting slides that showed data from 2006 to 2017 pertaining to retention. You will get those slides. I did ask the presenter if he would be willing to share the slides, and he said he would email them to me. Anyway, I think this is timely, so I would encourage you, when you get a chance, to just review it. And it's pretty much a lot what we already know, but it's good to see that there's research. What's that?
I said it would be my homework.
Yes, that and your book. And then as the last thing I will just mention, as you know, I'm still going through the process. Now I'm spending time with senior administrators, having one-on-one conversations about their roles and responsibilities. And as I begin to create my organizational approach to continuous improvement, that I think at this point, realistically, it'll be January that I'll present to the board in a work session to have a conversation. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kizner. That brings us to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Please.
Motion to approve consent.
Motion by Ms. Egan, second by Ms. Young. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to action items. 10.01, approve the division-wide and subject-area textbook adoption committees for mathematics K8, drama 68, IB music, IB psychology, IB world languages, Latin, German, French, and Spanish, and IB anthropology. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the committees as stated.
Motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Egan. Any discussion? No? I just would like to note for the record once again that every person who indicated an interest in being on these committees from the community is appointed. So thank you very much, Mrs. Cale and staff, for taking care of that.
I do, it's just an observation or a request that, being you on the school board, I did request information about a report that was presented, was it last year? And I believe the person that presented it went out of maternity leave, and I'm sure she's back now, but...
Dr. Towery.
Yeah, Dr. Towery.
Yeah, and so can we put this on the agenda at some point in time so that we could get a review of this IB program? And AP and APX?
Actually, I was going to bring that up when we discuss future meetings, because you asked about a work session, and I was going to bring that up.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I've been asking, but I just want to make sure that... I had to put it in writing. You know how they do nowadays, so...
Really, I need everything in writing. It's good for the record. All right. And we'll get to that when we discuss future meetings. All right, any other comments? All in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. 10.02, approve the changing of the governor's school culminating research project to an elective credited course for the 2019-2020 school year. Dr. Chase, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I move that we make this change to the program of studies.
Second.
A motion by Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Young. Any discussion? None? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. 10.03, approve the FY 20-FY 29 capital improvement planning, large project, and infrastructure project priorities. Do we have a motion?
I will move that we approve.
Motion by Dr. Chase.
Second.
Second by Ms. Young. Discussion. Yes, Ms. Hazard, we're happy to start with you.
So these are probably at Mr. Haran and Mr. Townsend. I need to understand, we have several documents here, a CIP large capital project list, a 3R list, and an infrastructure list. I need to be very clear of what we are approving with regard to this, how the 3R list and the infrastructure... And Mr. Haran, I'm sure you have explained this to me, but we have three very different somewhat documents with projects that are on both, and I'm trying to understand what document we're approving and its use.
Before you start, Mr. Haran, the motion was to approve the FY 20 to 29 capital improvement planning, large project, and infrastructure project priorities. So that's what we're approving, the large project and infrastructure project priorities.
I understand, but many times we attach to these items, several items, and when we say motion to approve, I just want to, I just want to make sure I understand which document we are approving and its use.
Correct. I believe there's four attachments to that particular agenda item. Attachment one or two are last year's. Attachment three is the proposed large capital CIP projects. And attachment four is the infrastructure, or as the county likes to call it, the 3R list. And so I think staff is requesting that you consider attachment three and four in the approval tonight. Attachment three, which is large, only has two priorities listed on there, as you recall from the work session. So I believe we, staff, coming out of that, based on the input we heard, we identified the need years based on the discussion. We got some direction from the board, and we filled out that list, and so that attachment has that. And so unless the board changes things, we're going to proceed with that.
Just to get a little clarity, so what are we sending across the street with respect to large capital project list? Are we just sending one and two, or are we including all of these projects that we send across?
Would be staff's desire that the board approve all the projects in some... Well, it'd be staff's desire that the board approve all the projects in some priority order. Right now, the board has identified the high school and elementary school 18 as the number one and number two respectively. So we would, it would be great if we got further direction from the board on that. We, again, took some direction at the work session and filled in some of the blank columns, if you recall. So, but we did not fill in the priorities.
So last board meeting, priorities one and two, the high school and elementary, were approved by the board?
Correct.
That was already set.
Okay.
So, and I also informed them, which I think I informed you, that the board wanted more time to discuss the other projects, and that's what we did at the finance meeting, I guess, last week. So that's what we have in front of you, the other projects.
The only comment I had was that I remember that we discussed that we needed to change the wording on rebuild Hartwood Elementary School to rebuild slash renovate.
Well, see, that would be very difficult because we can certainly do that, but.
Because I needed that information that I requested.
The cost, the cost will not be the same.
I understand, but I requested information, remember? Comparison?
Certainly.
Okay, is it the desire of the board to add additional priorities at this time? We wanted to get something to the supervisors because they had asked for us to get something to them, you know, after the last meeting. But we are certainly free to add additional priorities to these first two that we set, you know, last meeting. And there was no disagreement about these.
Madam Chair, was this brought up at the Finance and Budget Committee? And was there, is there a recommendation coming out of the committee on what those priorities should be? I'm almost ready to abstain on this vote because I didn't hear anything. I don't know.
Dr. Chase?
Yep, so I think the general consensus from our meeting was that we wanted staff to provide us with a recommendation and the rationale for that recommendation. Am I paraphrasing that correctly? I'm looking at my two other Finance and Budget Committee people. So we, we haven't really gotten a rationale, but we do have this list. It is not prioritized. So I'm not quite sure where we're going exactly.
Well, Dr. Kizner, do you know when we would be able to get that, that recommendation and the rationale for it from the staff?
Okay, so just two quick things. The other change that we made last time, we had like 2020, everything was needed now, and we realized that wasn't happening. So one way you could potentially look at the priority list, and I see when you have one high school and two elementary school, what I'm about to say might not be in sync, is the proposed opening date. If I'm across the street, I might be thinking that becomes your priority because you're stating that I need the Phase One of Christiansburg and renovate Phase Two of Ferry Farm before you want the new elementary school, okay? I do believe at the last meeting, I might be mixed up on this one, that we did provide some rationale with an understanding that long as we're not doing anything in the first five years that would alter what has already been approved for funding, or at least in the funding discussion, the board could keep going back to this project, as you're describing now, renovation of Hartwood, where in fairness to Scott, renovations is more complex than to, for a number. Because we would need to know exactly what would be needed to be renovated and you would probably need an outside, you know, expert to do that. A new building is kind of a formula that's easier to come up with.
And I guess the, one of the issues I have with this is when I think rebuild, I think we are doing like we did with Stafford High School, where we are tearing the building down and putting a new building up. Or like we're doing with Moncur, where we are returning the building to the county, but we are building a brand-new building. And so what we're talking about here with Hartwood is to acquire a new site and build a new building on that site, and we still have the existing Hartwood. So personally, I would be more comfortable with saying elementary school 19 rather than rebuild Hartwood. But that's just, that's just me, so.
So, so these, these didn't come out of personal board members' wants or needs. You know, it wasn't like, okay, Sarah didn't want Hartwood to get a renovation, so we drop. What it, and what Dr. Kizner was trying to explain is some of these have, some of these are more subjective than others. Some of them have hard data that you can look at and say, this is the year, such as elementary school 18. Some of them don't have hard data that you can look at and say, such as a renovation. It's like, you know, it's, well, when is a renovation really necessary? So again, I know I'm just saying the exact same thing, but.
In the last three, the Fleet Services, Drew Middle, and the North Stafford Fine Arts Wing, how I understand it is that the board has actually discussed the others over many times. And it was the last three that maybe were not vetted as much, and that's why we brought that as the last three items for the board to discuss. But the others, how I'm understanding, have been addressed by the board and is how it got on the list.
And, and just to follow up with that, I'm sorry, I was sitting quietly for the first part of it, but I feel like I need to kind of say some things because I am the only one from this committee that was on it previously. So, so what happened is we have some of these things that have already been approved. The previous board already saw the facts and figures, the needs, the dates, the whys, all of it. You know, we spent a year going over all of that data. And so that's something that I kind of explained to. Thanks for no help.
Ms. Young.
Ms. Young. You just love to leave people out to dry. That's what I was explaining to Ms. Young. You know, she's asking for all of this information and, and part of it is that we've already received that information. So perhaps we expected her to really just jump on board and like, why are you asking all of these questions? Because we already know the answer. So maybe we took it for granted a little bit, that she would already have received all of these, this year's worth of presentations that we received. So what we did is without moving any of the things that were previously approved, already stuck in there, it's budgeted out, it's, you know, it works. And then these three at the bottom that we've never received information on, none of us. We don't know how, not how they got there, we haven't seen the facts and figures that determine, you know, the need. So we kind of stuck those at the bottom because they're pretty far out anyways. And am I doing a okay job to make everyone comfortable with this list we've got here?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you comfortable with that rendition?
Scott's comfortable.
He's voting. We're the ones that are voting.
All Sarah and I are asking is give us that information or tell me where it is, or if you're saying, if you don't want to embarrass me and say you've given it to me before.
I'll certainly make sure that we provide it.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking. Let me look at it and be comfortable with.
And rebuild for Hartwood, we have that.
Because I, I thought we talked about that and you did say that you were gonna, so I know your plate is full and I thought we talked about it.
Send that request through, Dr. Kizner.
Yeah.
And then I, I wanted to speak about the three R list, and I want to first say I appreciate you getting us the new list with the totals for each school. And I guess, you know, I'm a little concerned about little old Drew Middle School, the fairly little bit of work that's going to be done on it for the next 10 years. And then miraculously, in 2030, we're going to spend $40,000, $40 million on a renovation. Just having my colleague here from Ferry Farm, I'm a little worried about how that works out. And then I was really perplexed by the fact that there's not a single project for Shirley Heim for 10 years. And I just didn't quite know why there was nothing on there for that school.
I'm 60 years old.
Ms. Hazard?
Ms. Hazard.
With regard to our large capital project list, as I recall, when we were at the meeting, we, and Dr. Kizner said, he was very used to us deferring to staff to bring forward their best analysis. And, and I think this is a great start for us. I do believe, and I know I'm going to get, Mr. McCosker, don't attack me. I also want to look at the Ferry Farm three and four is fine with me, but I know there were other schools that were renovated, Falmouth, Grafton Village, and Stafford Elementary. Those were renovations that were very limited in regards to what was done at those schools. So I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of the work that was done in those schools, that if there was a, we were going to come back, we were going to do that. Like I said, I have, I was very new on the board when some of that was going through. But I know those were fairly limited renovations, that I think if we are looking at all of our schools, and, you know, I need to speak to Hartwood, you know, we are the next oldest school. So I just want us to make sure, I am not asking, Mr. McCosker, please understand, for it to come out, but I'm just saying we need to make sure that if there are other older elementary school needs that were maybe follow-ons from the renovations, my, my memory on it is, I just want to make sure. I am not going to hold up the list for that reason, but I'm just saying if we are looking at renovations and maybe with enrollment projections, maybe we aren't building as much, then we do need to preserve those schools. So it's something I'm not going to make, but something for us to think about.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I, I'd just like to respond to that, and I appreciate the list, and I know this is an impossible task.
Right.
We can't please everyone. But I would like to respond to the renovate Ferry Farms. My concern is that over 10 years ago, we had a plan. And that plan was to renovate Falmouth, to renovate Grafton, to renovate Stafford L., to rebuild Moncur, and finally, just about now, to rebuild Ferry Farm. And guess what? By the time we got to rebuild Ferry Farm, we were told there's no money to rebuild it. Because that was your recommendation, that was our recommendation, but it's not affordable. So we're doing the next best thing. We're renovating it. My concern is, and I'm speaking for myself, but my concern is by spreading this renovation out over 10 years, it is not only costing us more money, it's not fair to that community. And we had a speaker that, you know, pointed out, this is the only school in that district. It is the oldest school in the county, yet we're saying 10 years ago, this board said it needs to be rebuilt, and we will rebuild it in 10 years. And 10 years later, we're designing Phase One of a renovation. So, you know, my vote would be to move up that renovation, to do all the phases of Ferry Farms before we get to rebuild any other schools or renovate any other elementary schools. I, and while I'm on the point here, I also have a concern about the addition to the Fredericksburg Christian Schools. I know we're going to need more room in the preschools, and I know you've all heard me say this, and I'm going to be a broken record until we address it. We're going to have half our preschools in the South, in Melchers, we're going to have the other half in the North. So the supervisors recognize we're going to need more room. They're the ones that suggested the addition. But if we're going to put on our 10-year plan to add two additions in the North, what does that mean? The kids in the South, the two, three, and four-year-olds are going to have to be bussed up to the North because that's where the space is going to be. So I think we would be more prudent in planning to plan equally for the North and the South, since that's how we're starting now. So that's my, I'll call it 10 cents, because it's a little more than two, but wanted to put it in. Did you want to go, Mr. McCosker?
Yeah, I'm just going to, I'm not going to belabor. I think it's, it is a tough list. I think you spoke very well about Ferry Farm. You know, when you, when you're on the rebuild list, the horror is that they stop putting money into it because you're on the rebuild list for a brand-new school. And when you stop putting money into it and then for over years and years and years, and at the last minute, they say, okay, now we're going to renovate because we have no money. Or you can wait 10 years and figure out if the board in 10 years, and probably Mr. Haran will be on the board by then. Maybe they'll figure it out. Maybe Brandy Quirk will be on the board by then. Maybe she'll figure it out in 10 years about how to get the money for the rebuild back, so.
Who bought the lottery ticket for the school board?
I, yeah, we should, we'd fight about.
We still have time if we get out of the.
Fight about splitting it if we did that. So, so, you know, right now, I am very happy with the Board of Supervisors and the school board supporting this minimal renovation. The renovation, as I understand it, the same renovation that Grafton, Stafford Elementary, and Falmouth would cost $30 million today, in today's money. So I'm very happy with the $10 million for our kindergarten and our two brand-new preschool classes, and to kind of refresh Ferry Farm. And I am really, really happy that sooner or later we'll get a second round of renovation to Ferry Farm so that we can kind of refresh that school, because it does need it. But I would, but I would ask the board, kind of switching down to the three R list, and I see for the next couple of years, I think staff has really addressed, you know, Ferry Farm. You know, don't, don't drag out the renovation and then at the same time, don't put anything on the three R list, right? That, that was initially when it came out, and it wasn't, it was just kind of oversight. And so, but I do see there's things on the three R list to keep Ferry Farm kind of moving forward with the renovation as we talk about our priorities for the other schools. So I, I'm ready to, last, I'm sorry, last point is, I do totally agree with the, if we're going to put, you know, we have $7 million we bought for Fredericksburg Christian up north, and we put $3.4 million to renovate that, those 20 classrooms off of 610 there. I think the next renovation should probably be down, down south, and I'm going to agree with Ms. Healy. And I think, I think Dr. Chase agrees as well, that maybe Melchers is something where we can put the money in so that the kids that are funneling down south can, can have a place to go without getting on a bus and going up north, right? So. Right, so, I'm going to hit this club. Anyway, so that's, so that's, so I'm, I'm ready to move forward with the priority one and two. I'm ready to move forward with the list, but I'll leave it to the board. I'll support.
Ms. Egan?
I'd just like to go back to my previous question. We have these committees, and I put a lot of faith into the committees who are doing all the hard work and, and all that. So this, my vote will depend on what the recommendation is of the Fab. If the Fab says, yeah, let's go for it, you got a yay from me. If you say no, let's not do it, or if there's a split, we're not sure, then I'll abstain. So tell me what I'm doing.
Okay, so I believe the action item 10.03 says approve the FY 2029 CIP large project infrastructure priorities list. No, I'm just kidding. It always says that, which I don't understand why, because we can either approve or not, and it tells us to approve it. I wanted to go back to the three R list. I'm sorry, but I did ask, you mentioned the, the middle school, it happens to be in my district. Mr. Haran and I did have a conversation about that, and based on a lot of questions that we get from the board, I would really, I'm so sorry, but I would love for you to explain that again for all of us, for the cheap seats. But also, I wanted to add that I, I do really appreciate, and I'm all for getting some, some more seats down south for the head start. But I would also just say that I think we're making, I don't want to be misquoted here. We are developing a problem that we've not yet received the information that we have to begin with. So we're saying we don't have enough seats in the South once we open this, this program in the North, but we don't, we haven't seen where the kids are going to be going. So I would, I would not personally say, well, yeah, let's throw a few million dollars at it without seeing the information. And I think we could all agree to that because that's what we commonly ask for. But Mr. Haran, if you wouldn't mind just explaining that to all of us, sorry.
Yes, Shirley Heim is, most of you know is the newest school in the inventory besides Stafford High School. So it's a, it's a very new school. We just, in fact, put a replacement roof on it because we had a warranty issue. But we have no projects that have been identified that are more important than the ones on the list. We tried to cap each year off at about 10 million. Some, some of the years go to 12, 13 million. So there are other projects that we have in our database that are not even in this 10-year window because they haven't even made it. And I would just tell the board that every year, you have an opportunity to look at this list. Will the list change next year? Yes. Will it change a year after that? Yes. And so the, the projects in year four, five, six, seven, and out are very, very soft, and they're going to change drastically, I would say, over a period of time. So I would not get too focused on those projects. The ones I believe the board should be focused on are the ones in FY 20, 21, and 22. Those are the ones coming up. Because not only are they the more acute projects that are needed in our infrastructure, but we have to mobilize and do certain things to prepare those projects to be executed. but we have to mobilize and do certain things to prepare those projects to be executed. So, um, Shirley Heim is a new school. It's a very new school. Um, as, as you don't see a whole lot on Stafford proper. You might see it on the campus in some of the outbuildings, but not on Stafford High School. Um, and Anthony Burns doesn't have a, a lot of projects. But we do have those identified, and we've gotten input from our, um, our principals, um, and we've got input from our maintenance staff. But they just haven't rose to that level of need yet. And as you all know, our requirements far outweigh our resources to satisfy those. So it's a, it's a challenge. Um, I would, if, if, if you give me just a little latitude, Ms. Hazard, the level of renovation that we did on Falmouth, Staffordale, and Grafton Village, for the portion of the buildings that we worked on were extensive. They were very, very comprehensive. In fact, we gutted those schools. So I don't know if there's another level of renovation that we could have done more than, now, the parts that we didn't work on extensively was the 90 additions that we had added there. So, so just, just to clarify that, so.
That's, that's really where I was going, was the places that weren't touched. I'm sorry if I made that.
And that was, and we did a little bit, but certainly not to the level of, so.
And then with regard to that 3R list, because I believe that tonight, that is actually the item we are approving. And I think there is a reason that it is called the 3R list because of the CIP processes. Now, this is a document we have to submit to the Board of Supervisors, and they will rescore it based on the criteria contained in the CIP process. So I would ask, whenever we make the motion, I believe that we need to amend it to say the 3R list and be very specific that this is the, the document we are doing. And Mr. McCosker, I agree with your parking lot project that's at Ferry Farm. My question to Mr. Horan is, do you want that done before the renovations? Will there be any impact to? I would hate to have any damage done while doing the renovation, which is a year later, on that parking lot. You may say, "It is fine." That would be my only thing. I don't want to build the parking lot, drive a truck around it, and then they say, "Oh, we need to repave it." So just as long as that's been thought through.
That's certainly a good question, and yes, we have thought it through, and the addition impacts the current parent drop-off. So we're losing some. So because of the, of the proposed addition that we're pursuing has an impact on the current operations, um, it would be, it would be nice if we could wait and not do it in the same year, but we need to because of some certain things, and it's other areas of the school campus that will not be impacted. Uh, there'll be a lot of activity here this summer, guaranteed, if in fact, the board is able to fund the parking lot project.
I just wanted to make sure that you didn't get a new parking lot, and then, so, you know.
Yep, so I just really quickly wanted to answer Ms. Egan's question. Um, yeah, and say, I think in general, the Fab Committee is, came out of our meeting ready to approve. I just want to make sure that we're all clear that, that this is a changeable document, and, um, so it, there are things that, that could change quite a bit next year. So it's not, there are no guarantees about anything on this document, other than the immediate.
Based on, on the conversation and Ms. Healy's question before, I think next year, the document, at least for the online document, will have a dropdown with an explanation for each project. This way, it's a good way to remind ourselves. And two, if people were not, for whatever reason, part of an earlier conversation, they'll, they'll at least be able to understand why this made it on the list. And so I assure you that will happen, um, you know, moving forward.
And at the risk of being so difficult, the reason the 3R list is so important is having attended and watched the Fab meeting across the street, there will be now a fi, the $5 million will be being withheld from our budget. So they are going to go to this list that I believe we need to make, be very clear on what list we are sending over, because as I understood the discussion, is $5 million out of our budget is going to be, they've changed it from the 1% to 2%, or, or at least considering it, and based on my read of the faces there, there will now be a second layer to these projects besides ourselves, which is another reason, as I said, I voted against the CIP process because I believe this is actually within our purview. But that's a, a bridge that has sailed, but I believe we need to be very specific on the document.
Okay, are we good?
Um, I, I just wanted to respond to Ms. Decatur. Just, um, my, my concern is, is not on the number of projected seats. I have no basis to project how many seats we're going to need. My concern is that we are talking about doubling, or actually tripling, the size of the preschool in the North, because of those 21 classrooms, 10 are going to be Head Start, and 10 are going to be preschool. So on this list, what we're proposing is to add 20 classrooms for preschool in the North, and not one to the 10 in the South. I don't know the projections, but I do know that children move in throughout the county, and it would be, um, very unusual if all the preschool kids moved into the North. We know they're all going to be full when we start. So it's just something that I think is important that we consider, and that we, we also take into consideration that we have families to serve throughout the county, you know, North and South. And just like we don't want those Head Start kids to have to spend four hours a day on the bus, we're not going to want the, the preschool kids to either. So that's my concern. I mean, I must say, the preschool is in the Rock Hill District, so, you know, that's, that's a good thing.
Oh, look, my microphone's still on.
I'm trying to, um, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be fair.
No, we share the concern, and I just, we, we share the same concerns. We just should look at the figures before we throw money at it.
And I think it's good, and I think they're a good discussion. And I think maybe even if it comes back, maybe even the, instead of saying, "In addition to Fredericksburg Christian," maybe we just say, um, "Early childhood, special education, uh, capacity."
Increase.
Increase.
Yeah, that would, that would solve it.
And then when the data comes back, as Ms. Decatur said, to say, "Hey, we do really need something at Melchers," or, and then it just shifts right there, um, so.
Well, this doesn't have to go tonight, the large capital projects. I think that's what Mrs. Hazard was asking about, and it sounds as though the Fab has asked for data, and you're not in a position to make a full recommendation until you get that data. So perhaps, you know, if the board wants to consider getting, getting the, the data that's been requested.
What data, because?
Well, I, I don't know. Dr. Chase can explain, but she's asked for it from the, um, for the, for the Fab.
If we want data, I would just like to know what data, because I feel, you know, I feel like every time we, we bring this up, we discuss it, we say, "Let's go," and then we have a discussion, and then, you know, so I'm, I'm, honestly, I've been here now a while, so I feel like I own this now.
Almost two months.
Yeah, so if you could just tell us, what is the data that you don't have? I get the one on the renovation for Hartwood, that, that I heard tonight, but that's not on the list. So we could add that to the list. I think that's a separate item. Rebuild is different than a renovation, you all know that. So what don't you have that you need us to provide you so you're in a better position to make a decision?
Dr. Chase.
Yeah, I think we just still don't feel like we've been told why they're in this order. I.
Well, I, I don't, I don't want to put Mr. Horan on the spot tonight unless he is comfortable in addressing that at this point.
I don't know how this works, but I've heard somebody say before, "Call the vote." I would, I would go ahead and do that.
Then we'll vote on approving attachments three and attachment four to send to the Board of Supervisors. All in favor, say aye.
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 All oppose, no?
Abstain.
Please.
Dr. Chase?
Uh, no.
Ms. Decatur?
Aye.
Ms. Egan?
Abstain.
Ms. Hazard?
Aye.
Ms. Healy?
No.
Mr. McCosker?
No.
Ms. Young?
Zoom the camera in.
No, it's not that.
Zoom it in now.
So should everybody, so should everybody send their requests to?
Pam hasn't voted yet.
Well, she hasn't voted yet.
No.
Madam Chair, motion fails by four nays, two ayes, and one abstain.
Aye.
So I think the, um, so I think the 3R list probably would have went tonight, I think.
Can we not vote on whether it's separate?
And I think, I think if we do, Dr. Kizner, just some friendly, if we do a dropdown, if, yeah, no, the question was called, and it was, it was a valid.
And that's the way to do it.
And that is the way to do it, yes. And, and so maybe we, if we do the dropdown list on this, on this justification, just justification dropdown list.
Is it justification mainly on the opening date?
I thi, I think Dr. Chase could, um, could, will you get with Dr. Kizner and let him know what the Fab is looking for? And perhaps the Fab can bring that recommendation the board has, Ms. Egan requested?
This has been on the list, your list, for months.
Right.
So I feel like, that part I did not, I was not here. So the last, actually, everything has been on this list. We did not, staff did not add anything to the list. What we, so I want to give you what you want. I just don't want us to come back two weeks or a month, and we still haven't answered your question. So, so I guess, I did hear one thing, why that date versus another date? That we could definitely do, but if there's, and, and you don't have to do this right this second. If you could just forward to me, and then we could make sure we get you. But I, I think at least there's a recognition that, at one time, a board put this on the list, and we're working on that list, and maybe the list is ancient now, and we need to take some things off and add some things on, which is fine. Um, that's why we gave the two empty lines in the bottom to make it clear this doesn't have to be the locked-in list.
And then I think the board, I think the board, you could poll if, if necessary, instead of addition to Fredericksburg Christian School, uh, early childhood education, uh, capacity addition, or however you think, Mr. Horan. And then that would be one change.
I would be comfortable with that.
And, um, yeah, and then.
Not working documents, they renovate first.
Yeah.
So the other thing I would ask you to think about, because it would be cost-efficient, and this is opening up a whole nother thing, but we actually had this conversation one other time. Do we want to try to avoid all these phases? Because once you start a project, and you get the workers there, and you have everything, it might just make sense. So let's, you know, there's not a great time difference that we're saying the opening up the date. So if, you know, maybe we could provide it to you in multiple formats. But maybe the other thing that I'm just saying, if you look at the dollars, while you're there, you might as well get it completed, then delaying another two years to go into another phase, that's just.
You're talking about Ferry Farm.
I'm thinking Ferry Farms and also Fredericksburg.
Well, but we may not, we may need to phase that, North and South.
Well, you have two, you have two projects that have two phases.
Good point.
Yeah, I would just hope that it wouldn't, you know, because the initial wouldn't slip with that.
Yeah.
And perhaps, um, Dr. Chase could get with Dr. Kizner and explain, you know, what she's asked for on behalf of the Fab, and then the Fab could bring the recommendation to the board. And let's try to look at that for the next meeting. And we'll, we'll put this on, um, we'll put, we'll put it on for action, but it will be a new item because technically, this one has not passed.
And for the benefit of the staff, we didn't have any issues with the 3R list? Did anyone, or if you have issues, email them. Email them to Missy.
Would we be able to separate the two and pass one of the two?
That's what I want to ask, Mr. Nelson. Could one of the members voting in the majority bring this back for purposes of a motion to approve the 3R list this evening? We could? All right, well, do I have a motion from someone who voted in the majority?
Yeah, me.
Okay.
Um, I want a motion to approve the 3R.
No, no, you have to bring it, motion to bring it back.
Okay, motion to bring it back.
Bring, okay, and then, um.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, we vote on that, correct? All right, all in favor of the motion to bring this back for this evening?
Aye.
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 Is there any, Ms. Decatur, are you going to vote?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Um, I heard all in favor of the motion to bring this back. All right, now, do we have a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion to, um, pass the 3R list on its own.
Okay, approve the 3R list as stated in attachment four. Is that correct? All right, and we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Young, second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion?
Yes. One more question. Guess what it's going to be? Was this a recommendation by the Fab to approve the 3R?
I see a head shaking. Was that a yes, Dr. Chase?
I believe so, but I'm going to look at my.
I don't know, because I think the last one was, yet I was approving it, and two of the Fab members weren't, so I'm a little, we're just going to, it's a free-for-all. I understand they're separated now. I don't know if it was a recommendation, because two members voted against the first one, and one did not, so I'll let you guys speak for it.
So let me ask, let me just ask this. Was there a vote taken at the Fab meeting? So then there was no formal recommendation?
Yeah, I thought we were good with what we ended the meeting on. I thought that's why the meeting was over.
The changes that are requested in this document are not here right now.
Is your question sufficiently answered, Ms. Egan?
So we could vote on it.
Good as it gets.
I guess.
We can keep on for a while, if you'd like.
Mr. McCosker, I know you were saying something, I was trying to, I was trying to hear you.
No, I, I think, did, did you have some naming convention that you wanted to add? Did you say, Ms. Hazard?
Naming, we're talking, we're talking about approving the 3R list at attachment four, whatever it's called, infrastructure list.
Yeah, I think we just need to call it the 3R list. That was what I was trying to make as specific, and as you stated, what attachment it was, because many times we go back.
Attachment number four.
I do have one question about one item on there. The repairing the tennis courts at North Stafford. I know we were funding that, but it may be a two-pronged process. Is that correct, Mr. Horan? Because I, it may be a $700,000 project, I just didn't follow it. Because it's on the, to already be funded with this year's funds, too. So if not, it's a bonus for us?
No, no, no. It's, it's, I didn't understand when you said it's on this year's list. We, if you recall, there were no projects in the budget, in the FY '19 budget, except for the security projects, right? Those are the only funds, projects that got funded in the budget. So the FY '19, by default, rolled into FY '20. So when you look at the FY '20 program, it is the list that we will use if the board chooses to fund any year-end projects. So, does that make sense? Last year, that project did not make the funding line, and it was not funded. And so they rolled into, um, the FY '19, which was never, there were no projects funded, so.
So that went back to my first question of what the interplay was between these two documents. That's what I was trying to understand, what, which document we were voting on. So, okay, I will, I mean, I will follow that, that sounds fine, but I just, we have to be precise on these documents and what they're called.
Attachment number four.
Yes.
It's titled 3R infrastructure project.
And I think that's how we should.
Okay. All right, Ms. Egan, call for the vote. All in favor of approving attachment number four to be sent to the Board of Supervisors for our priorities for the infrastructure, say aye.
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 All oppose, motion carries unanimously, and we will have another item on our action agenda at the next meeting for the CIP Large Capital Projects. All right, that brings us to our information items. 11.01, approve the award of a professional services consulting contract to ARC Bridge Consulting and Training, Inc. of Herndon, Virginia, in support of elementary school redistricting for the 2019-2020 school year. This is one for information, but staff has requested that we move this to action. Uh, before we have a motion respecting any movement, is there any discussion that we want to have on this item? The information item? Dr. Chase?
Yeah, um, I just want to, and I'm, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this question, but I just want to double-check that by approving this, I am not approving that we are using a committee with, with this consultant, right?
No, what, what is on here is the award of a, oh, I'm sorry, Mad, did you want to answer that?
Doing the dance. That's correct, Dr. Chase. You are not approving the, the process, you're just approving the selection of the consultant.
However, not tonight, but really, next meeting, we should get closure on that because, you know, we have to start the process, and we have a timeline. So not tonight, but in two weeks, either work session or on the agenda somehow, get some consensus on how we want to do with the committee.
Well, I, I mean, if, if the board, I know it's getting late, but if there is a general feeling on the board with respect to whether you want to committee or not, we can at least have an initial discussion tonight, and you want to have that discussion?
Yep, you might as well.
Sure.
All right.
I think the.
Ms. Egan.
I think the initial conversation was, we're spending this money to have a third party who was not emotionally vested in the process. We did talk, we did talk about having some interested parties, not, not the way we did it in the past. A little different this time. But I think to keep it clean, and to keep it without any emotions, that we omit the interested parties for now. We're going to have plenty of time for public input at our public hearings. And from what I heard from them today, they're going to keep track of all the comments, is that what I heard?
Yes, that was my question.
So, and they'll all be taken into consideration, so that's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Chase.
Yeah, I, I have a similar reaction to Ms. Egan's. I would like us to be able to say that, that this process had not been biased by particularly forceful members of PTAs or PTOs somehow skewing or biasing this process. However, I'm, I'm not opposed to having somebody from transportation, having somebody from special education, having somebody from county transportation to help inform the consultants who are less familiar with our region.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
I was always for a committee, limited committee in scope, with individuals that have specific background. For example, I mentioned the county person that does the maps and all that, because, you know, he has that background of the, the region. So, I want a small selected committee. And, yeah, school people, but maybe a person, not necessarily PTA, PTO, but a person that is part of a larger organization. And I would, for example, put a person from a, a larger group that represents, you know, like NAACP person. But if the, the board says no, I would.
But I believe maybe that increases to five, or some number, sorry, seven, whatever number. But to make sure that the portion of what we wanted out of the committee is public input. So, we may need to have, in my opinion, potential additional meetings without the committee, which is what I would support.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker.
Sure, agree with the board members that I think the public need, needs to have input and, and a variety of input at a variety of times. So, we'll figure that out. However, the committee should be comprised of certain individuals with, you know, in the transportation professional, the GIS professional, the, and then maybe even a county, the county folks, some of the county folks across the street. Be a very small type committee that interacts with this, with this group.
Okay, thank you, and I agree with, with my colleagues. I've been through a number of redistrictings, and I think that we'll be able to remain more objective and more transparent if we let the consultant do what we're hiring them to do. Taking in mind that we will want to get input from the communities, I agree with Ms. Hazard. As these proposals are developed, I think rather than call a committee, perhaps we should put together a list of potential resources, either on our staff, on the, on the government, on the county government staff, and you can coordinate that with Mr. Foley. You know, even within the community, and, and make these resources available, particularly the, the areas that we've talked about, transportation, special ed.
Right, so what I would respectfully just request or suggest, I, I don't think our staff should be defined as committee members. They're resources, as you used. And I think the superintendent could manage this well. The consultant, transportation won't have to be at every meeting, there'll be ins and outs. I, I like the suggestion that you've made, and one of the speakers made, get experts from the county side that have a skill set that we may, may need. And obviously, I will keep you informed of, of that process, but to keep it, you know, to allow our folks, and that addresses another comment that I just heard, the appearance that we might have influenced the outcome. And so, staff is, participates when their role is needed, okay.
So, I. Madam Chair, I move that, sorry.
No, do we have a motion to move this to action?
Wait one second. And then Ms. Decatur make that. I would just ask us to consider, I know that if we seem to be in agreement that we may approve this, is something that we would want to consider, was something, two, well, one thing we talked about, and we talked about it at a prior redistricting work session, would be two additional potential add-on items to the project. One was special education. If you all saw in their background, they have done this for Prince William Counting, County and Loudon with the special education things that Ms. Healy, that may be an add-on item to this. And also, I know there was discussed future location of schools. Is that a, and I won't say easy, nothing's easy, a resulting add-on of them analyzing all this data. I know that has been done in the past, it may be something, though, our other consultant does, but that's just two items I would like the, us to consider as potential add-on items. I know that would require, and that can be future, but I would just like us to think.
I think, I think that's good to keep in mind, but right now, we can, if we look at the, the proposed contract, you know, as it's stated, and as it was announced for the, the RFP.
And if I could just do an and/or after that, that what we, we also discussed the preemptive redistricting, which kind of goes hand-in-hand with that issue. So, when that gets put for further discussion, I want that to be included as well.
You mean leaving room in the schools for the future students, right?
Kind of like what we did with Every Mill.
Right, and, and I think that's what, that's what the, the consultants indicated, they were used to things like that. And that's another good reason to involve the county planning people as well. I know our staff works very closely with them, but, you know, just, just as a resource, though, not, you know, any position to give direction. It's if, if they need information, and, and I would suggest to Dr. Kizner, everything come through you. And that we not have independent discussions with the consultant, so at least there is, just like our communication policy, we go through you, that with this committee, so then, there's not going to be any issues about whose. Right, if, if that's manageable, or you can delegate that to one of your, your staff. But, but I, I think, I think that if it's, if it's, if it works for us, it should work for this project. Okay, thank you, all right, now, Ms. Decatur, did you have a motion?
I would motion that we move item 11.01 to action.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Decatur, second by Ms. Egan, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, do we have another motion?
Motion to approve 11.01.
Second.
Well, actually, it's going to be 10.04.
Okay, motion to approve 10.04, approve the award of a professional services consulting contract to ARC Bridge Consulting and Training, Inc. of Herndon, Virginia, in support of elementary school redistricting for the 1920 school year.
All right, that motion is clear.
And a second again.
And that's second by Ms. Egan. Any discussion, all in favor? Please say aye, aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, we have two more information items. 11.02, approve the renewal of the Hartford Medical and Express Pharmacy Health Insurance Coverage Policy for retirees who are eligible for Medicare Part B, any questions about this?
Yeah, I just wasn't really clear as to, in doing this, do we need to come up with more money to pay for it? I just wasn't clear from reading the thing.
No, there is no money specifically attached to this agenda item, because retirees pay the full premium. It does, however, increase the amount of the Stafford County Public Schools Health Reimbursement Program, because 88% of our retirees who get health insurance through us as retirees are reimbursed for some or all of their premiums. So, this specific agenda item has no budget impact, but it does roll over into that, that agenda item. Does.
So, I'm hearing it will eventually cost us some money?
Ah, here comes, here comes the finance guy, you got to back up here.
In the health fund, there is not an impact. But because so many of our retirees do not pay the full premium for their, for their health insurance, it does have a down-the-road impact, yes, it does. Yes.
How much would that cost us?
The, we spent about, it's roughly about $1.9 million in total reimbursements. That includes the retirees who are under the Medicare age, and also includes the 65 and older Medicare-aged retirees. So, this is a two-and-a-half percent, roughly two, two-and-a-half percent increase in the premiums. So, it's a nominal impact, but that number has been growing over the years.
And this was a plan that was put into place to save the school system money, was it not, to require the, of retirees to have this particular, this Medicare plan?
Anthem requires that Medicare B-eligible retirees cannot stay on the Anthem plan, so that's why we've had a supplement for years. We've had the supplement program for five, it will be six years, we've extended it, but we will be doing an RFP next year and hope to have options for renewal for the board next year at this time.
I remember when it went into effect, there was some concern on the part of the retirees, but it seems to have worked itself out, that this plan works, yes.
Does the county have the same type of program for their retirees?
We actually are together with the county, yes.
We are, so that, that kind of trend.
And we will continue, more than likely, to do a joint RFP with them.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, that's, it just says there's no change to retiree benefits, I think that's pretty important. There's 616 folks on it, 477 are in the school division, and then 139 are from the county. But, you know, it is important that we take care of our retirees that have been here, and they've been working hard for years and years. And don't forget that, you know, they, they put in, they put in their, they put in their time, and.
Yeah, how many, how many teachers in that pool?
I don't, we don't have the exact number of the breakdown of what are teachers versus other, we just have the total employees.
Just checking to see if they would like some part-time work. Just, just checking. All ready, yeah, we would, we would love, right, Dr. Kizner?
Public service announcement here.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Egan.
Thank you for your service.
I was just going to say, we, we got rid of the bridge program, which was another benefit of theirs.
This is, well, because we are violating the IRS rules with this, unknown to us. All right, this is coming back for action at the next meeting. If anybody has any other questions on this, please send them to Dr. Kizner, and he will share the answers with all of us. That brings us to 11.03, approved the 2019-2020 High School Program of Studies/ High School Course Catalog. You're here early this year.
Yes, we are, and that's partially due to the shortened summer, and so therefore, we're hoping to get the Program of Studies approved and moving forward, so we can get the copies into the schools and get it online, so we can start the scheduling process a little sooner. And for those members of the board who do not know me, I am Eric Powell, I'm the K-12 Social Studies Facilitator, and I was the lead on the High School Program of Studies update. And I want to take a few moments to share with you what the updates are. Okay, the process that we used this year, when I was given the task of leading the Program of Studies update, was a bit of shuttle diplomacy. I went around early in the summer and met with the principals and members of the guidance teams at each school, listened to their concerns and what things they wanted updated. I then took that information to the LOD team during our summer retreat in July. We sat down, took their requests for updates, did our revisions to it. All of that was done and ready to go by the time teachers reported back to school in August. And in August and September, the LOD facilitators then met with their lead teachers, their specialists and others, to review the particular content sections and other changes that were being proposed to the Program of Studies. Met with the counselors, got more feedback from them as a team, and then LOD did a second day of revisions and everything else there at the end of September. Then took it to the principals at one of their meetings on October 4th, and got their input, as well as sharing it out with members of Student Services, our Assessment Accountability Department and others for their input. Took it back to the counselors again last week, and so now we come to you with where we are with that. So, let me share with you some of the changes that we've done with this year's update. One of the big things that we did was to reorganize the layout and the flow of the Program of Studies. It basically has two major sections. There's a general information section in the front, and then your course listings behind it. And so, one of the complaints people had was that there was a lot of flipping that you had to go through, because some of the different specialty programs are in the middle of the course listings. All that information is in the front, and it's been reorganized in a more logical way that we think will be more student and parent-friendly. We added the index back in, that was one of the big concerns that the counselors had, was that we took the index out last year to reduce the length of it, but they really liked that as a resource. So, we've put that back in, and one of the other things you'll notice, to help with some of the navigation of it, is that we're putting different colored tabs along the margins on the right-hand side, so that if you're flipping through the book, you can quickly find where the history is, where the science is, and some of those other listings. New courses that are added in the Program of Studies for this year, there's two IB mathematics courses. These are new courses from IB International, so we've added those courses for our rising juniors for next year. The old math courses will remain in there as well, as those students who are in that current sequence will graduate, and we'll phase those out and shift to the new ones. There's a new environmental science course that's been added. And two CTE courses that are really not new courses, they're combinations of courses. Digital applications is replacing keyboarding. Keyboarding, as a standalone class, has been replaced by the VDOE. It's now keyboarding, word processing, and basic computer principles, so it's a little bit a meteor course, and so it's called digital applications. And then we had two courses that we've now combined into one. There was information technology fundamentals and cybersecurity fundamentals. We felt putting those together would add a certain amount of practical application to the theoretical knowledge of the information technology. And so, it's now called cybersecurity and information technology fundamentals. We are removing some courses, and these were either due to staffing that no longer is with us, that were teaching some of these courses, or that because of lack of student interest, there hasn't been enough enrollment, that these courses have gone. So, we've offered them for the past five years, but not enough kids have signed up for these. So, these courses will be removed from the Program of Studies. Other changes of notes, I challenged the LOD facilitators to work with their lead teachers and other teachers to see what we could do to condense the course descriptions. A lot of our course descriptions are very long, very jargon-esque, not necessarily student and parent-friendly. We were able to reduce 11 pages out of the Program of Studies by shortening those course descriptions into something that's a little more to the point and a little bit more succinct. We updated the SOL requirements to reflect the new 2017 Standards of Accreditation, which state that students will not have to take as many SOLs with this year's current freshmen, so we've clarified that in there. A new VDOE seal for excellence in science in the environment was added, that came from VDOE. For IB classes, we clarified the language that weighted credit for individual IB classes is no longer based on them being required to take the end-of-the-year IB exam. This parallels our AP weighted grade policy or practice that we put in place last year. I will note that students who are in the IB diploma program are required to take those end-of-the-year IB exams as per the IB International in order to earn that IB diploma. But students who choose to take individual IB classes are not required to take the end-of-the-year assessments. They'll still do the assessments that are, the internal assessments throughout the year. We updated the flow chart for the math sequence to reflect a variety of options kids could take versus the old table that kind of looked like they had to go in a certain sequence. We hope that the flow chart will better illustrate to students and parents that they have a lot of options, that they kind of go through, and they can pick, and, and there's a lot of different ways that they could go about meeting their math requirements. And then we expanded some grade levels to provide more elective opportunities for students by, for our freshmen and our sophomores in some CTE classes and a few other classes.
Can I interrupt you for just one second? Because I don't want to get past this and forget to ask this question.
Okay, go ahead.
This, this was an issue back about three years ago. Children were being placed in math classes based on an SOL or something that they took in, like, the third or fourth grade. So, that's, that's not, we're not doing any of that anymore, is that correct? I just want to be clear.
Yeah, they've updated, I know Mrs. Stovey, our math facilitator, has updated the math placement process.
All right.
That doesn't necessarily change, you know, this flow and sequence of courses and what's in the Program of Studies.
Great, sorry to interrupt.
Okay, so our next steps, I'll be coming back to you at the next board meeting for action, and hopefully, we will approve this. We are also going to convert the Program of Studies from a Word document, which is what you have a PDF of, to Adobe InDesign. This is a better publishing software, and allow us to do a little bit more with the formatting of it. We're very locked in on spacing and other things, and we hope to be able to reduce the length of it a little bit further by being able to do a little bit more flexibility with the layout of it. Hope to also be able to put in some hyperlinks for our online users. So, in the table of contents, there'll be a link, and you click on it, and it'll take you to those pages in it, as well as in some of the tables and charts where it references some of these different programs. You could click on it, and it'll take you to where those courses are. So, we hope that'll also make it more parent and student-friendly. Once y'all have approved it in November, we'll send it to printing in December, in order to be able to get the copies to schools in January, so that we can begin the student registration process a little early this year with the shortened summer. That is scheduled to begin on January 21st.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question real quick?
Yep.
Yes.
How, how much does this cost for the printing?
The printing is budgeted for $6,000.
Okay, so, are we, do we have any plans to go green? Because I know you said there's a link, and so have we reduced the numbers in the years?
Yes, we do not print a copy for every student anymore. We print them for every eighth grader, because that's really where they're first being introduced to the High School Program of Studies, and the requirements and things for graduation when they enter as a ninth grader are the ones that follow them throughout their high school career. So, we do give a copy to every eighth grader. We also print several hundred copies for each high school, for families who do not have internet access, but the majority of our families are now accessing it online.
Yeah, for the eighth graders, aren't they supposed to sit down with the counselor?
They do.
So, then, we're still printing them?
Yes, so they can take it home and have that conversation with their parents.
Because for those parents that have online, they could actually look at. Because for those parents that have online, they could actually look at it online versus...
But some people like, like me, I always print things off because it's easier for me to read a long document.
It's not about ease.
Maybe it's a generation thing.
Well, the problem for me was that last year, when I went to find it online, it was three years old.
Mm-hmm, I remember. You mentioned that, yeah. Yeah.
We've updated that, and it's current right now, and we will update it again in December.
The problem about being old online, it's a, it's a, an issue they are not necessarily trying to...
I think they recognize that and they made the changes.
Yeah, so that's not about going green, but it's about an error that was made.
Right.
But yeah, thank you. Thank you for that.
Any other questions?
I think my follow-on to that in, in the way of communication, perhaps though, sending some kind of truly email with the link in it to the parent or guardian of the student is helpful, because as much as we want to say that our student comes home and says, "Look what's his..." I will tell you that I ask for most of this stuff, and I have to, well, had, I'm just saying, I think for some parents that is helpful, and they will link to it if they know how to find it, that perhaps we might want to think about a communication plan of saying, "This is available." However, as Ms. Young and I both learned, Stafford actually does not, is in the worst echelon in terms of internet access for after-school help for students for homework. So I think we have to be very careful about assuming that we can always be there. I know you have them printed, but perhaps that additional personal link-out, I will tell you, when I was an eighth-grade parent, I wanted the paper. I'm still a die-hard dinosaur. I'm sorry.
We'll be more than happy to work with our communications team to do that with parents.
So I just want to double-check. So we've added some math classes. We've taken out some math classes. We've added some other classes. We still presumably have in the Program of Studies the disclaimer that if we don't have enough people to take the class, the class won't be offered.
Correct.
And I'm, I'm, just want to say I'm a little concerned. You know, when I used to serve on an advisory committee, schools that had IB programs also wanted AP, and the problem was sometimes that there weren't the number of students to offer both of those sets of classes. And that's going to especially be the case with math, where we're having so much difficulty getting math teachers with the skill set to teach DE calculus or something along that line. So I just, and given that our middle school core classes are over-enrolled, we may need to be looking at not offering so many small classes at the high school level. So I just want to just sort of throw that out there.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker.
Yeah, thank you for the briefing. So one of the charts, it said that every single IB class will be weighted?
IB classes are already weighted.
So every single one? Doesn't matter what, if it's art, IB art, IB...
Correct.
Okay. And that's the same thing with, that's the same thing with AP. Every single one is weighted. Okay. So we got a email from a constituent, and it's a Rock Hill constituent, that last year there was 90 honors physics kids at Mountain View High School. Mountain View High School is, from what this constituent says, is vast majority non-IB kids that are taking classes. So why are we increasing, why are we decreasing honors physics and increasing IB if the kids aren't taking those classes?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure that we are. I would say I can refer to, you know, our science facilitator to kind of get into that.
Want me to get back to you on that?
Sure, I mean...
That might be something, if we want to really get an accurate answer, then we should ask Dr. Kizner to...
He submitted in writing, and we'll get your response.
Just, just to be accurate.
Yeah.
I hate to put somebody on the spot at 9:24 in the evening.
Yes, yeah, it is late. Okay, so, so you know, that, that is my concern, is that, you know, we call it an IB school, and I think IB is a great program. However, I'm not so sure we're, you know, we've got 500 kids graduating and 20 diplomas from one school and 13 from the other or whatever that IB, I, I, I don't know, is the juice worth the squeeze? And in the meanwhile, we're getting rid of DE calculus, we're getting rid of AP classes. I just, I, I've always had a concern about that, and it's always been something that, you know, just piled, piled forward, you know, and moved forward on the board and...
Well, stay, stay tuned, because we have a question when we get to the next meetings on that topic.
Yeah, but thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Powell. That was an excellent presentation. If anybody has any specific questions on this, please send them to Dr. Kizner by the end of the week, so that he can start getting these answers together and, you know, share them with the board.
Ms. Healy, if I could just make one final comment, I do believe some, at some point, I'm not trying to stir the pot tonight, that at some point in this document, we need to put what our exam policy is.
Put what?
Our exam policy. And I know that is something we as a board still have to grapple with, but I will tell you, that is probably the question I get asked more than anything that's in here, that I do believe once we've settled on whatever it is, and I know that should be in this document. Okay, so, sorry, that was my public service announcement.
And actually, that sounds like an issue that we need to discuss. Have Dr. Kizner, he, he needs to be briefed on that, because in his two months here, I don't think that's come up. Just hold on for a couple more months.
Well, I, I think I mentioned at the listening tour that the high school principals have already addressed me with some concerns, and so I would love to have that conversation, yeah.
All right, the next regular meeting of the school board is November 13th at 7:00 PM. However, I do have a question with respect to a future work session. Shh, 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 we're not done yet. Ms. Young has requested that we have a review of the AP IB and APX report on a work session. I don't know where Dr. Kizner is on the current report. I know you were, you're working on that.
Yeah, I, I actually got the reports today and I just skimmed it, so if, if you just pick the date...
Okay, I don't know if the board wants to try to do that in November or set it for December. There's, I, I noticed there's quite a few meetings in November, particularly if you're on that CIP committee. Oh, December, all right. So, all right, let's, let's, let's have Missy pull the board for a work session in December.
All right, it won't be on the same day as the meeting in December, because you're...
It's already taken, yes. Yes, I saw that. But you can, you can pull the board. All right, we are now adjourned. Thank you.
There's your thing.
No, I put, I hit it, so you guys...